Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted seven zero at five six.
We're going to start the actual regular meeting, which is while you're all here.
Daniel. Daniel.
Good.
Yes.
All right. Have your ready, Daniel. We're on the record. We're ready. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council for June twenty second, two thousand and twenty-two. Know that for six o'clock. We do have one public hearing this evening. It has to do with zoning amendment for the Prospect Hill area of Hamilton to traditional neighborhood zoning. Please do a roll call.
Mohler.
Present.
Pullman.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Ryan.
Here.
Nab.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
Okay, we're going to start off in offering a prayer by Councilmember Susan Vaughn, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you are. Amen.
During the summer celebration of our nation's birth, we ask for blessings on our servicemen and women. We ask protection for all men and women in uniform, both here and around the world. We are grateful for their service, their dedication, and pray that they are safe. May all that July fourth symbolizes renew our faith in freedom and devotion to democracy. We are thankful for our blessings of life and liberty. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to start off with a special presentation. And we have some young people that we want all of you to know a little bit more about. First one is Adam Gibmeier. Now, best way to do this, I think, is, well, you know, you know Adam pretty well, don't you?
Yes.
Come on down here, and Eric, you know Adam real well. Come on down here. All right. I think the best way, just on that, I think the best way to... Intro this. Hey, how about that? Sorry. Best way to intro this, I think, is to see a video about Adam Gibmeier. Okay? So watch this, it doesn't take too long, but this is a really neat video. Please watch this at the, at the screens.
Nice, Adam.
This is in Orlando at the USA Special Olympics two thousand and twenty-two. Adam just rolled a bocce ball, and Adam just won a gold medal. That is absolutely one of the most purest emotional moments I think I've ever seen. So, I'm not sure what your walk-up song is, Adam, now that you're a gold medal winner. But why don't you walking up here with your parents and the folks who went with you down to, come on up here. With your parents and with some of your Team Ohio folks, okay? All right. And... Who's up in that picture? Who's on these in that picture? You up there? Might be best to have Councilmember Pullman kind of explain this a little bit about, about the Special Olympics and what Orlando was like, and I know you weren't there, but your wife was. But before we start doing the proclamation and all, kind of set the table for us, if you would.
Do the best I can. I have to turn it over to Debbie, but on the video there, the one thing that you didn't hear the audio was that Adam that morning thought you were only going for the bronze, right?
Right.
And they didn't tell you that you were going for the gold, because they didn't know it until that morning. And then the video said you were excited because you won the bronze, but when you came up there, they said, Adam, you won the gold. So, that wasn't in the audio. But USA Games, correct me if I'm wrong, I was down in Orlando this year. Debbie is your main director out for the state. She, Debbie Williams, she's... Southwest region, thank you. And what, and this is my wife, Tanya, and she is the area coordinator for Special Olympics. And so what they did is, Tanya went down as a nurse. She went down as registered nurse and helped with the USA Games. So she was down there, what, ten days, I think, somewhere around there. Over fifty-five hundred athletes, I think, competed, right around there. Right around fifty-five hundred athletes in various sports, all through the Disney complex. And I don't know, you know, really, it's just that they know a heck of a lot of what went on. It's just, and I know you, you're an old timer on this one, you've been a bunch of them. But this was Tanya's first time on this, and she was pretty overwhelmed with it. So, it's really unique to give these athletes, you know, a great chance. You guys had great ceremonies, you partied a little bit, didn't you? Had good food, everything, huh? So, I mean, it's just a really unique time, and we've been to a lot of events with, different events, with the different organizations, states and stuff, I guess, and I could imagine. I used to love going to the state baseball with Challenger, and we did it every year for twenty something years. But to do this, I'm sure it was just awesome. What, what did you think of it, Adam? What, what'd you think?
Uh, probably, uh, um, uh, 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 that is really fun.
It was fun, right?
Yes.
Best sayings, everybody?
And, and Adam, one thing about Adam is Adam's about the hardest working person you're going to see. I mean, I, you, you definitely represented well for Team Ohio and got a lot of neat look and guard, too, didn't you? Shoes and everything, didn't you? Some cool shoes. Saw them shoes, so...
We didn't wear them.
You didn't wear them. But you had some really cool Lego shoes or something, didn't you?
Those were big.
With all that was basketball, I'm sorry, but, yeah, you had some cool clothes and everything. But it had to be a great experience for you, and you represented Ohio very well, and like you always do. And you, yeah, I knew you'd come back with a gold. I knew you'd do that. Because you work hard. So I'll turn it back over to Mayor.
All right. These are your parents, right? I'm sure they're very proud of you. I'd like to have them say a few words. Would that be okay if we let them talk about you? If you're the one that's got the medals, man, you're in control here.
I don't know what to say, except thank people for all your well wishes and your congratulations. I read Facebook posts to Adam every morning when I saw him, and it just brightened up his day. So, we really appreciate all the community support.
We're just extremely proud of him.
You taught Adam a little bit, right?
Yes, I did.
You didn't teach him how to play bocce ball, did you? I didn't think so.
I just want to say, Adam, man, you are an amazing young man. It's been twenty-four years since you started in my class. That seems like, that's forever. So we're almost forty? Thirty-eight? Buddy, it's been a long time. And honestly, this, Adam, Adam was in a unique situation with me. We had a student who passed away. It was a special needs class. Adam Gibmeier and that whole crew was wonderful. I learned more from them in one year as a second-year teacher than I have my entire career in that period. And it was unbelievable, wasn't it? We, we did football together. We went to prom together. That was an experience, wasn't it? And Adam, as a young football coach, I might have been a little overzealous at times, and Adam would remind me of my language and to keep, keep it clean, right? What an amazing person. He has a wonderful personality. He's a dynamic kid. He does swimming and many other sports as well, bowling. Man, Adam, it has been my pleasure, my, my entire teaching career to have known you. And that is my favorite class that I've ever had. It was a wonderful experience, and I thank you for what you gave to me. So, congratulations. I always knew you were going on to great things. Thank you, buddy.
All right. I've got a proclamation for you. Office of the Mayor, a proclamation. Whereas Hamilton City Council and city administration would like to give recognition and congratulate Adam Gibmeier for his success in Special Olympics competition and placing first in the recent USA Games. And whereas Adam has been competing in the Special Olympics for thirty years and came home from the two thousand and twenty-two USA Games a multiple medal winner. And whereas Adam competed in bocce, where he won a bronze medal in singles, a gold medal in doubles, and a fifth place in the team's competition. But he also competes here, around here, in swimming, equestrian, bowling, golf, basketball, and track and field. Whereas he also enjoys camping, biking, hiking, playing with his dog Rusty, and watching his favorite sports team, the Cincinnati Reds and the Cincinnati Bengals. Whereas with this chance to compete at the highest level, Adam is able to enjoy the Orlando area and visit Disney World. Now therefore, I, Pat Mohler, Mayor of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, and members of Hamilton City Council, hereby recognize Adam Gibmeier, declare that he is an honorary Hamiltonian. Applaud him for winning multiple medals, including a gold medal in bocce at the Special Olympics two thousand and twenty-two USA Games, and thank him for being a role model for all of us. You rock, Adam, and you are a champion. Now, can we have a real loud "You rock, Adam" from all of you folks? One, two, three. All right. That is for you. And you're an honorary Hamiltonian for the rest of your life. You're a role model for the rest of your life. Thank you so very much.
Another award.
And another, and another one, yeah. That gives, that's two of them I've given to you. Thank you so much. And we got something special for somebody else. Can you stay up here for a minute with us? Okay. All right. City of Hamilton, Ohio. This is certified that Tanya Pullman, registered nurse, who is unluckily married to Eric Pullman, is hereby awarded the certificate of recognition for assisting Special Olympics. Thank you for assisting Special Olympics for many years, including the Special Olympics, USA Games two thousand and twenty-two in Orlando. Thank you for being part of Team Ohio and Team Adam. Thank you for helping others and helping to run the local Challenger Baseball League. Some of myself as mayor acknowledged by all members of council. So we thought we'd surprise you with that, because you have spent quite a few years with Eric, helping others, and you're part of Team Adam. So, how about a round of applause for both of them, Tanya and Adam? Anything you want to say about your wife here?
Well, there's a lot. She's not going to be happy, but it's, that's all right. She doesn't take a lot of credit for stuff, but, you know, there's a part in there where you said she helped with Challenger baseball. She was a vital part of it. I got all the credit all the time for running the league, but she was always behind the scenes, like she always is. She's a retired nurse. She worked in newborn ICU, and she's always out there helping people. She's got our two twin granddaughters over here and my new grandson over here that she watches quite a bit and definitely takes care of them. And she's told me one time that she always believed when she was little she was going to take care of special needs people. That was something she always said, and she ended up doing it, so. And she is kind of retiring, stepping down from special needs to take, as a coordinator, to take care of our grandchildren, help take care of them, and, because my daughter's overwhelmed over there. I don't know why. But it's, but she's going to take some time away from it, but I'm sure she's going to be in the background. She'll be in the background. And Debbie Williams is probably one of the best things that ever happened to Special Olympics, too. She is, you know, they have become great friends, and Debbie does, I couldn't even, a lot. Couldn't even give you a list, but we'd be here all night, but thank you, Debbie, for what you do, too. Okay? All right? Cool.
Thank you, champ. Thank you. It was fun doing this. This is a special committee. You're very welcome. Miss Wosker. Case Troken. Calling Case Troken. I believe your mother's here. Is anybody else here from your family? Come on up, Mom. You're really smart. You know that, don't you? Okay. We're celebrating young people and student athletes, and, and recently, Councilmember Lauer said, we got to do something for this Case Troken. She is just a special student, a special person. And I'm going to turn it over to him, because he says, we got to do this, so I want to hear his words first.
Okay, so I went to Mr. Pendergast. I said, is there anything that you want to present that would make Baden look really well? And you were the first thing he said. I have to read all this, because Case has a lot of stuff going on. Case is one of 1.6 million students who completed the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship qualifying test in two thousand and twenty. She and about sixteen thousand other students qualified at National Merit Scholarship semifinalist as a National Merit semifinalist. Of those sixteen thousand, she was one of ninety percent that became a National Merit Scholarship finalist. So congratulations on that. She is top ten in her class. She is number ten in her class, correct? She is president of the youth philanthropy club. She has applied for early admission to the University of Cincinnati Medical School. She's been admitted to the biomedical science program at Ohio State, and also looking at Princeton, Northwestern, and Case Western Reserve. As a former Baden grad, I just want to say, you're amazing, and you represent our school very well. I look forward to seeing what you do in the future. So, would you like to say something? I'd like for you to say something. I'd like to hear.
Well, I want to say thank you to you and everybody at Baden, especially Mr. Pendergast, who recommended me. I definitely would not have been able to accomplish any of these things without the amazing community at Baden. All of the teachers are amazing, and the administration, who have not only encouraged me to complete some of these things, but also helped me every step along the way if I ever had any questions about anything, or if I found an opportunity and said, this is something I really want to look into. My school counselor and the rest of the administration at Baden were always right there to say, well, let's do it. Let's get into this, and let's figure it out. So, thank you.
Well, I look forward to seeing you in the future, and I wish you the best. I guess I'll see you around some this year at school, hopefully football games you attend, so. But you're amazing. Please keep it up.
Thank you.
We've just got a certificate of appreciation. If I got mentioned, Joel, we could never even spell Princeton and Northwestern, could we? Well, you're just a great representative of the Baden experience. So, and thank you. We're going to, we're looking forward, looking forward to seeing what you do at the Ohio State University, if you go there, UC, wherever you go. And I'm sure your mom's going to be telling us, hopefully, how you're doing, because you're going to be a shining star, not just for this area, but for the entire country, whatever field you choose. City of Hamilton, Ohio, this is certified that Case Troken is hereby awarded the certificate of recognition for scholastic achievements. Congratulations on being a National Merit Scholarship finalist, placing number ten in your class, and your early admittance to the Ohio State University. We wish you the best in future endeavors. Signed this twenty-second day of June, two thousand and twenty-two, by myself as mayor, acknowledged by all members of council, who know your family and you, and we're just so proud of you. So, this is yours. Congratulations, and, and thank you, Joel, for making us more aware of this young lady who we're all so proud of. Now, we've got to hear from Mom for a second.
I'm not sure why. Actually, you know what? It's really fun to be, to be Case's mom. So, she really makes both me and her dad very proud, and we are just very happy to have found the Baden community and to be a part of that. And we have a younger daughter who also will be coming up through there. So, hopefully, we will see amazing things, and yes, Case is everything that you just said and more. So, thank you very much for acknowledging.
How about a round of applause for Case? You're very welcome. All right. Jean? You and your team are going to take over now.
You get to stay up here, sir.
I'll stay up here.
Yes, yes. Thank you, sir. So every year, the City of Hamilton recognizes the employees that have exemplified to the fullest degree our core values, those being inclusion, passion for Hamilton, innovation, respect, sense of urgency. I got them all. Ooh, and owning the outcome. This year is no different. We have some amazing individuals, so I would like, for the individuals, when I call your name, please come on up. And then we have some folks that are going to say a few words about these stellar employees, and we're looking forward to celebrating the awards that you have won with you. The first person that I'd like to call up is Craig Bruner. Craig Bruner is the city's data analysis administrator and has been with the City of Hamilton for five years. During his time with the city, he's initiated multiple innovative solutions to improve the Department of Infrastructure and the use of GIS to record and update data. Craig has implemented a continuous improvement program within data analysis. Look at you, loving those spreadsheets, huh? This is the first time in the history of the city this has been done, and Craig's expertise in GIS has also helped Public Works to improve the day-to-day operations of our field crews, especially with improvements made to Snow Informer, which reports where crews are working during snow events. I'd like to ask Mr. Tim Werben to come on up and say a few words, sir.
I don't think Craig wants to come up. We talked about this earlier. I think it's appropriate that Craig sat in the very last row of the council chambers tonight, because he sits in the basement, and a lot of times I don't know where he is. But the thing is, he always answers the call regardless of what the assignment is. When we established the customer-first desk out here, they needed some help with some forms. They went to Craig. He shot them out within a day. That's the kind of thing that Craig does on a consistent basis, and this innovation award is well deserved.
I have to apologize. It's probably a bit of a letdown after gold medal winners and scholars coming up here. But I appreciate the acknowledgement and enjoy working for the city. Thanks, everybody.
I just want to say some of the smartest people in the city work in the basement. That's where you are, right? And when I see that here, and I, the word initiated, and the word innovation, but initiated means that, that you've got your own motor, you, you're self-motivated, you see something needs to be done, and you do it, and that is just such an important thing in this city. You're a great public servant and glad to have you on our team.
And with that, we present you your award certificate, as well... As well as the engra-, oh, yes. We, we do it to the nines in the City of Hamilton. So you have an engraved frame with the year and the award that you won, and special thanks from us. So thank you, Craig, for all that you do. You're welcome. The next individual we'd like to honor would be Mr. Brandon Weeks for Inclusion. Come on up, Brandon. So Brandon is a newbie and has made a great impression upon the city. He's worked for the City of Hamilton for just over a year in one of the greatest departments, firefighter, next to HR. Whether the call is for a first aid check or a cardiac event, Brandon treats everyone he comes across with compassion and care. He has been described by his supervisors as an open-minded young man who has a knack for making the right decisions intuitively. So important. Brandon is very proud, is a very proud employee of the City of Hamilton, who is always going above and beyond. He continually focuses on bettering himself and the department any way he can. Thank you, Brandon, and we'll ask Chief Mercer to come on up and say a few words.
Congratulations, Brandon. So as Ms. Pope said, we've had Brandon with us for about a year. He came on with a larger group of people, one of the more grueling... One of the more grueling and entertaining portions of the interview process is explaining those core values for the city of Hamilton. Nothing more important than our, our public-facing, public servants demonstrating those values. Thanks to city council and the city administration for making those clear. And Brandon, thank you for executing those values and serving our citizens, we're proud of you.
Thank you, sir.
Who's here for Brandon? Okay, you gotta stand up. They were woofing you in a good way back there, weren't they? All right. Thank you, Brandon. The inclusion award is very special. Thanks for making those right decisions, because those are saving lives, okay? Thank you, and that is your certificate? Thank you, Brandon.
And here is your autographed, or excuse me, your monogrammed frame. So, thank you for the work that you do. Would you like to say a few words?
Oh, that's okay.
So humble, thank you, Brandon. Next, from our law department, we have the esteemed Tori, Victoria Bates. If you'd come on up for a second. And we'll ask Ms. Letitia Block to come on up as well, if you would, please. Tori is detail-oriented and well-respected by her peers. She brings a positive attitude to work, and is kind to others. When Tori is in charge of a project, she keeps things... Page turning. Keeps things moving forward, and even keeps other people accountable. The staff member who nominated Tori remarked, said Tori does a lot of heavy lifting on staff reports and other projects, but doesn't put her own name on them. She does not get the credit she deserves, and she is a particularly special part of the law department. But I will let Ms. Letitia Block, Attorney Block, tell you a little bit more.
So, congratulations, Tori, on your public service award. Tori really embodies the value of respect and all the core values, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to publicly thank her for all that she has done. Tori is from the city of Hamilton, and she started with the city in 2017. And it was Finance Director Dave Jones that saw her as an accounting assistant, and said she has great potential. So when I became Director of HR, he said, I think you should hire her as your HR assistant. And so Tori worked so hard on so many projects in the HR department. This very program, the Public Service Award Program, Tori helped to execute and implement when she was HR assistant. And so when I became Director of Law, I took her with me into the law department, and she has done an exceptional job supporting the criminal and civil function of the law department. And we would not be able to accomplish what we are able to do if it weren't for your intelligence, your hard work, your efficiency, and your organization. So I just wanna say, thank you for being an awesome teammate, we are together, and you are an exceptional public servant.
Who's here for Tori? Whenever I see Tori's name on a staff report, I know she's done her homework, is detail-oriented. I'm a lawyer myself, I know it's difficult with this law stuff, it's so challenging, but, but you, we all respect you, pure and simple. So, here is a certificate, just saying we recognize Tori Bates, and we respect you every hour of every day.
Thank you very much.
And to go along with that, is your monogrammed picture frame. You deserve so much more, yes, you deserve so much more. We appreciate you every single day and every way that you show up for the city. Thank you, would you like to say a few words?
I actually just wanted to say a couple of things really quick, so I don't cry. I wanted just to finally publicly thank all of my city team. A lot of you were there for me in October of 2020. My oldest daughter was diagnosed with leukemia, and my entire city family pulled together and really supported me, and gave me everything I needed to get through it. So it wasn't just a job, but a place that I came to that helped me get through it. So finally, I can say thank you to everybody all at once, and of course, I will respect you always for being that person, or those people to me, so thank you.
We have such amazing talent here in the city, so grateful to be among the many. Could we please have Ms. Angie Gett, who, Gett, excuse me, who has awarded the Passion for Hamilton Award, and Mr. Tom Vanderhorst, if you would come on up for a moment, sir? So, Ms. Angie is a friendly, solution-oriented, reliable, and overall great to work with. During the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic, Angie was one of only a few people who came into the office while most people worked remotely. Angie even covered the customer service desk to support her coworker, who needed to be home with her child. Recently, Angie was one of the only people in the whole building to come into the office during a snowstorm, to make sure that customers would have someone here in case they needed a birth certificate or a permit. Birth certificate, I said certificate, I can't remember, okay, thank you. Angie is also a big supporter of Hamilton businesses. You can find her around our community most weekends volunteering at River's Edge and supporting local businesses. And Angie has worked for the city as a health technician since 2015. Congratulations, Angie, and I'll turn it over to Tom Vanderhorst.
Wow, what a, what a evening, this evening, I mean, with what Tori told us. Our community is more than just a community, it's, it is like family. Angie, I can't begin to tell you how proud I am of you, for not only winning this award, but for the things that you do for us. I mean, just to give you an idea of who Angie is, there's a couple of things about Angie. You always know where you stand with Angie, which is something that I appreciate, and I kinda knew that early on when she started working for us. We were talking in the office, and she told me that she had to fire her son. So she was, she was working at Skyline as a manager, and she said, no call, no show. I have to follow rules, rules are rules, and you gotta go. And the funny thing is, is her son was with her husband looking at a boat. So Dave's in trouble, too. But I, but I certainly admire and respect the, the integrity that she has. And just to give you an idea, I mean, like, she's ridden home in salt trucks. Recently, we had Alicia Ritchie, one of our coworkers, have a pretty nasty spill, break her leg in a couple of places, bust her kneecap. You know, Angie took up a collection, took food to her at home, stuff like that, that just makes you know that, you know, she's really a fine individual, that we're lucky that we have as an employee. And her family's here, that's Zach and Wes over there, her pride and joy, her husband, Dave, and her son, Alex, who also works at Kers CPA, and I know Susan, you served with him on one of your boards. But what a great family, and, and we're proud to have you as not only Hamiltonians, but as an employee of the city of Hamilton, I'm proud of you, nice job.
All right. Who's here for Angie, come on, let's hear it. Okay. I've seen Angie work real hard in that office, she's got this rock and roll headset on, and that means she's answering calls from citizens. You're a great teammate. Thank you for choosing your, your career for Hamilton. Skyline's loss was our gain, I guess. But I've got the certificate here, which says basically, thank you, Angie, for your passion for Hamilton.
Would you like to say a few words? Just thank you very much. Woman of few words, always about the work, we appreciate you, Angie, thank you. The winner of the Own the Outcome was Mr. Leonard Little, and he works at the Greenup Hydro Plant, and has been there since 2017. Mr. Little is not here with us this evening, but his direct manager and supervisor, Ken Hilger, will be here to accept the award on his behalf. Mr. Little is responsible for maintaining all electrical systems in the plant. Leonard has gone above and beyond as the lead for significant capital upgrades to the Greenup Hydro Plant, and he's gone above and beyond to be the champion and owner of the project. He schedules and plans work, coordinates technical information with the system supplier and field of engineers. He coordinates and directs the effort of other city groups, and answers questions that arise, and does all of this work while working on the front lines of the project. His dedication to this project is unmatched, and since the implementation work started in mid-February, he is truly owning the outcome of this significant upgrade. We would like to celebrate Mr. Leonard Little, and Kenny Hilger is on, here on his behalf.
Thank you, on his behalf.
Go have the box, please. Again, folks about the work, we like that, right? I got yours. And last but certainly not least, the gentleman who saves the day quite a bit of the time, Mr. Sean Harris, please come on up. So Sean is an outstanding employee who displays a consistent bias for action, and moves swiftly and thoughtfully. He, of course, has won the Sense of Urgency Award. He's worked for the city of Hamilton since 2013, and is currently the Building Systems Supervisor. Sean shows everyone what dedication looks like by exceeding expectations in our delivery of quality services. He is always quick to respond and helpful, especially if you get locked out of your office. If a solution is not immediately available, Sean works to find one fast. His sense of urgency seems to extend beyond the immediate, as he is consistently thinking of ways to help or provide a solution. In the past couple of years, even during shutdowns, it does not go unnoticed that Sean is always around and willing to help. Sean has a true commitment to quality and shines through. We are thankful to Sean for all of his work. Now we'll ask Dave Jones to give us a few words.
So I'd just like to thank Sean for not only being extremely urgent, but extremely patient with me. I'm a accountant by trade, I know nothing about building maintenance. So I'm, I'm bringing Sean's phone, be it the weekend, be it four o'clock in the morning, if the HVAC system's not working, he's coming in, making sure when the folks come into work, it's, it's cool in the building, so, you know, thank you, Sean, you certainly deserve it.
These mechanical guys are always solution guys, so you're keeping this whole building running, I thank you for that. You also win our Duck Dynasty Award in the city. But no, thank you, I mean, I see you working all around, different floors of this place, and you deserve this, no doubt about it. Thank you, Sean.
Would you like to say a few words, sir?
Oh, no, thanks, I'm just...
Back to work. Thank you to everyone who supported our individuals, and could we have another round of applause for all of our public service work? Always excellent here in the city.
Well, don't go anywhere. You may know about our CHIPS Intern Program. City Council has got two CHIPS interns right now, is that correct? Can you have them come up here, and then introduce them, tell them, tell the crowd about these two young people who are working real hard for us already?
Yes, sir, absolutely. If I could have Mara Cunningham and Sophia Williams come on up, please? So, the city has invested over the last couple of years, and very thoroughly, in our CHIPS program, which highlights young people with amazing talent, students, and young people of color. We have two individuals, one representing Hamilton High School, Mara Cunningham, and one representing Baden High School, Ms. Sophia Williams, and they are working alongside Daniel Tideman to learn the different facets and avenues, and all of the things that encompass the city clerk's office. They have been working diligently, this is what, day two, day three? Day two? So we're happy to host them, and hope that they are gonna have an amazing learning experience. Would you like to tell a little bit about yourself? Okay, thank you.
Like, like Ms. Jean mentioned, I just graduated from Hamilton High School, and I'm just really grateful to be able to have this opportunity and be able to work with Daniel, he's great. And everyone that, everyone on the council that's contributed to this learning experience as well. Oh, I'm a junior at Baden, and I am also really thankful for this experience. I'm really excited to just learn and grow, and meet all kinds of new people.
Thank you so much. Well, we certainly wish you ladies well, and we'll be looking forward to seeing you all at council, you know, all the time. Thank you so much to our council members, we appreciate your support in every way.
I want applause for Jean's hope.
Thank you, sir, thank you, I appreciate you.
Okay. Next, we have Rich Engel. How about a round of applause for Rich Engel? All right. He needs a new walk-up song, apparently, there, with Daniel.
He's lucky there's a thing called copyrights that exists, or else we'd have all sorts of...
Good evening, mayor, council, citizens of Hamilton. Well, once again, I follow some pretty dramatic and exciting folks ahead of me, so I'll try and make it as exciting as I can. It is about the train depot. And we are getting closer to the start line. So if you remember, the CSX deadline was officially approved by CSX to be August 31st of this year. The bill of sale was executed by the city and sent to CSX on Monday this week, June 20th, and we have not received it executed back from them yet, but we will follow up and make sure that we do get that. The foundations are on schedule and to be completed by the end of June. In fact, they poured the stub walls of the foundation for the multi-story building earlier this week, and they'll be pouring the other single-story building in the next few days. The asbestos remediation in the historic buildings by CSX began on Monday, June 6th. Their original schedule was to have it complete by last week, last Friday. It's been extended probably until the end of this week. And we're continuing to stay in touch with their consultant to make sure that that's gonna be completed. And the windows are being removed and bagged for future potential use. So with that, we need to get started on scheduling the demolition, the window door bracing effort, and the relocation schedule, and I'm in the process of coordinating that with the three different contractors we're working with. First step would be to have Coon Restoration come in and remove the tin ceilings and any other historic artifacts in the buildings. So they're scheduled to come in in mid-July, but I'm trying to get them in sooner than that, so we can get that work complete. I've also updated the task assignment, schedule, and costs. No changes on the first few items. The one item that has changed is the... Try to get the right one here. And I'll provide you a detailed version in the morning, a PDF version of this, so you can look at it in more detail. For the construction of the foundations for both buildings, if you recall, I had mentioned earlier that they found poor soil conditions, and they had to excavate as deep as 12 feet deep on the multi-story building. And with that, it's gonna add an additional $127,000 to the cost of the construction of the foundations, with the work needed to excavate, and with the extra low-strength mortar that was needed. We also had some initial foundation changes that they incorporated, and that's another $10,000. So with that, we have another 100, nearly $140,000 in extra cost. We're still below the original bid, that was, if you recall, was $778,000, so we're still roughly about $100,000 below the original bid. And in addition, there is $60,000 approximately in floor slab work that we will most likely non-perform, since we do not know what exactly is going to go in for a tenant and subsequent utilities. Also, just to adjust the costs as well, I've reduced the cost of the window... Also, just to adjust the cost as well, I've reduced the cost of the window replacement from the original $275,000 estimated cost. I've reduced that $100,000 to 175. And in working with Listco Restoration, they've recommended another window company that deals with historic buildings in Cincinnati, and I've been in contact with them. And I think the more opportunities we have to discuss window replacement with different companies, I think we can get the best option for the, for the buildings. So at the moment, we sit at about 100, 1.5 million dollars to be expended by time the buildings get relocated onto the new site that are costs that need to be expended. With that, are there any questions from council this evening?
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I got one. Rich, the tin ceiling out there, we're going to restore that eventually. We're going to save, they're going to save it, right?
Yes, that's the intent, is to remove it and salvage it and save it for future potential use, yes.
Okay. That's a neat feature inside there.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Rich, I like hearing about the possible decrease in expense of the windows, as well as possibly maybe reuse those windows or some of those windows. Thank you for bringing that up each time.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Rich. We now go to audience of citizens. Individuals who wish to speak may make comments during this part of the agenda. I reserve the right to speak specifically when the item is up for a vote on council floor. All individuals who wish to address city council are required to sign this blue public speaking book, and each speaker is allowed up to five minutes. Do people sign the book? One, Jim Lottman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Anyway, I was going to say, okay, first of all, I park out going over in Lindell all the time. The streets of Lindell, they got so many deep potholes on the streets, especially on Fairview and Two Street Peril, where you know, a real bad, real bad potholes. I mean, you can't hardly miss them, you know. Can't miss them at all, and they didn't even fix them at all. It's pretty bad. Real bad. I mean, they fixed their potholes, but not Lindell. Why? That's why?
Well, we'll address your comments after you're done with all of your comments. If that's okay.
Okay. And also, parking, Barney's Bar all the time, people parking in front of the signs says, no parking here at the corner. They park between the sign and the corner all the time, nighttime all the time, you know. But yeah, the other day, people here in, down here in town, they had them parking, we call them parking ladies, you know, give tickets to everybody else, but don't give tickets over there. Why? That's discrimination. That's discrimination, isn't it?
Keep going down your list. We're writing things down right now and...
I'm, I'm, I'm agreeing on what they're saying, going great, I'm saying. I just want, one of these things, you're for the people, you know.
Okay. Well, I know, Jim, that you have talked to our customer service first floor specialists, and I believe they were working on some of the things that you have mentioned to them. And also, Rich Engel, I know does take notes and does look at the potholes and the, and the manhole covers and all. So you're, what you investigate and what you find out, we do work on.
I understand, okay. Well, thank you, I'm saying, but it's the same thing. I've been going all the time and doesn't happen over there, you know. There's a name.
We're getting caught up on the potholes and the likes, so just stay tuned. I think you're going to be, as each month goes by, you're going to say, wow, city did some good work in the last 30 days, and we hope that's what you say when we next meet.
It's been over a month, seven minutes, eight minutes.
Well, we're working at it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Have a good night.
Chris Cannell.
Longtime listener, first time caller. I just wanted to thank the utilities department for last week during the outage. They did a spectacular job. Excuse me, my allergies. I called and at 3:00 in the morning, I could hear them out there with chainsaws. I think some, you know, fell on the power lines. But by 4:00 in the morning, I had this done. And I wouldn't blame them if they would have started in the morning, you know, 3:00 in the morning and down in the creek bed with chainsaws. And I think it's going above and beyond. So there's, there's too many times all we hear is the bad things, and we need to hear hell of a job that they're doing.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
In an upcoming meeting, we're going to be recognizing our infrastructure department. I think they received a very prestigious award from the American Public Power Association. Our reliability is one reason why we got the award, also because the duration of our outages are relatively short, even those localized outages, which were like very small areas of houses. We did a very good job. I think we got most of ours, I think we got most of ours all going before Duke did. I think we did very good compared to other, other utilities. So Chris, thank you for your kind words. I've heard a lot of positive comments about how well and how quick our, our folks did their job, which resulted in a lesser duration of an outage. Thank you for those comments. That takes care of our audience of citizens. We now go to the consent agenda, and that includes matters such as all staff reports, meeting minutes, caucus reports, information report, including our May financial report and our May investment report. Before we get started, is there a motion, I believe, we want to do regarding a couple items on the caucus agenda? You want to get rid of that, take care of that right now?
If we could do that right now before we go to...
If you want to do it right now, let's get that taken care of. There's some items we wish to have pulled at this time just due to the fact that they have not come to their fruition, so to speak.
Yes, that'd be a motion to pull caucus agenda items number six and seven.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Councilmember Fear, seconded by Councilmember Pullman, that will remove items six and seven from the caucus agenda. Did that be a roll call vote or is voice vote sufficient?
Voice vote is sufficient.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same side. Hearing none, that motion is carried. Now we're going to go to the committee of the whole, and that allows council to consider the reports of the agenda, of this section of the agenda, under certain suspended rules which allow us to ask questions and provide discussion about matters that are coming before us this evening as well as down the road a ways. So is there a motion that the regular meeting be recessed? The committee of the whole take place.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We go into the committee of the whole at 6:54. Clerk, will you please lead us through this committee of the whole?
Absolutely. So for our first two items on our caucus agenda will be presented by Mr. Dave Jones for our finance department.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Thank you, Daniel. Citizens of Hamilton, my name's Dave Jones. I'm the finance director for the city. This is caucus item one, and it is the 2023 annual tax budget. It is required by the Ohio Revised Code. It is something we do every, every July. It's due in July. We will have a public hearing on July 13th, and there'll be a resolution that you all vote on to adopt. The tax budget will be available to the public by July 1st. We're going to post it on the website. You can email me. You can see the website and my email address on the screen. And, and we'll also make sure a PDF copy is sent to you all, city council. The tax budget goes to the county budget commission. The county budget commission is the county auditor, the county treasurer and the county prosecutor. So what city council is responsible for in the fall and what you pass in December of every year is an appropriations ordinance. The budget commission is more of a checks and balances, and they make sure that we have estimated your, our resources, our estimated fund balance and, and resources. I think here on the next slide, is, is enough sufficient to cover what you guys are going to appropriate. What we send in July is just a very early estimate. It has no bearing on what we do throughout the budget process or the appropriations ordinance. However, they do check, you know, periodically throughout the year. We send in what's called a certificate of estimated resources as you guys pass supplemental appropriations, which will be on the next caucus item. They check to make sure that, you know, we have the fund balance or the revenues to cover that. Any questions on the annual tax budget?
Any questions? Thank you, Dave, for that good explanation.
So item two is the four supplemental appropriations. So as I said, you guys do an appropriations ordinance, which is the, the annual budget, and then we can amend it from time to time throughout the year. I apologize, there's been so many this year. There's a lot of activity. This is a relatively small one. The reason we're bringing this to you now is the Van Hook Phase One Safe Road to Schools. A lot of these are grant funded. You can see the first one is a, is a security camera and HPD, HPD overtime grant. The Van Hook Phase One, that's mainly grant funded. There's $159,000 worth of general fund money. But what a lot of folks don't realize is even these grants, they're direct pays to, to contractors for maybe the Ohio Public Works Commissioner, whoever, that still runs through our books and still requires appropriation by city council. You can also see that there's $152,000. We've talked about this many times. That's to remove the underground tank, a 101 Pershing. I think there's been a lot of, I don't know, remediation activity that's taken a lot longer than we thought, but it looks like that's finally going to get underway. And the final bullet point under the general fund is we're going to use $636,000 for some Fire Station 25 improvements. That's going to be paid for out of the ARPA revenue replacement money. I believe there's also around $300,000 in CDBG money that's going to be added to that. And then we're purchasing a box truck for storage that's going to be used out at the Rivers, Rivers Edge Amphitheater, and that's out of a central services fund. You guys got any questions on that?
Thank you for the explanation, and those are obviously very important expenditures.
Yes.
Thank you, Dave.
All right. Next up will be Liz Hayden of our planning department.
Good evening, city council and residents of Hamilton. This is a simple one. We are applying for a $59,000 grant from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for Phase Three, the part in red up there of the Hamilton Beltline Trail. And it is furthering, we already have a big grant from OKI, and this is an effort to reduce our local match that we are required to spend. So it's another effort just to reduce the amount that we'll have to take out of the general fund ultimately at the end. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Next up will be Rich Engel of the engineering department.
Good evening, Mayor, council, citizens of Hamilton. We have an opportunity to apply for federal grant funding for natural gas replacement system. These items are located on both the east and west sides of the city. We have Hampshire Drive between State Route 129 and the south end of it, Alberton between Beal and Long near Main Street, Elizabeth between Gersham and James, Millville between Verlin and Mayverne. And this is an opportunity here to remove the natural gas lines from the rear property lines and put them out in the front, in, in front of the properties on the street side. And also, New London between Orchard and South Washington. The grant application that you'll consider is for consulting of $100,000 and the estimated construction cost of $700,000 for a total of $800,000. It would replace 3,700 and some odd feet of aging gas main, primarily steel and ductile iron. It'd reconnect 30 existing gas services, reroute 25 new gas services from rear to the front of the properties. And the source of the funding would be the U.S. Department of Transportation Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration, and it would be 100% funded with no city match required. Are there any questions?
Anybody got a question? Sounds great. Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
I'll take care of that one for this evening, Mayor. So number five is a new liquor permit for a C1 and C2 liquor permits at 1018 Main Street. We, my office receives these on a regular basis. That's why you see a good amount of them on the agenda. Typically, when there's a new liquor permit, we get a notice from the State of Ohio Division of Liquor Control, giving us as a legislative authority, an opportunity to object to this permit, whether it's through the building department, fire department or health. In this case, staff has reviewed this permit and we have no objections. It's our recommendation that you do not object to this, and then this stops here tonight. There's no legislation after this. So here is the property in question, it's 1018 Main Street. Do we have any questions about this property?
Any questions about this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
For the public, can you explain what a C1 and C2 license are?
Sure. So there are different kinds of licenses. I believe this as a retail establishment would be serving or selling prepackaged beer and wine that would be consumed off premises. So there wouldn't be like opening a bar or anything of that sort.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, sir. That takes care of the committee of the whole. I'll accept the motion, the committee of the whole be closed.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Nab, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Hearing none, that motion is carried at 7:02. I'll accept the motion, if the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Fear, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Roll call vote to reconvene the regular meeting.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
So we're back in the regular meeting at 7:03. I'll accept the motion that council received the reports of the consent agenda and concur on their recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We now go to the public hearing section of the agenda. I'll accept the motion, if the regular meeting be recessed, and the public hearing take place.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Pullman, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We go into the public hearing at 7:04. Would you please read it into the record?
A public hearing regarding amending the zoning at Prospect Hill zoning map amendments changing the zoning from a mixture of residential and commercial districts to a TN, traditional neighborhood, City of Hamilton applicant.
Anybody in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving amending the zoning at Prospect? I believe there's a first reading tonight on this one, is that correct? Record there'd be a second reading probably July 13th on this one.
July 13th.
Anybody in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing? Anyone on council wish to be heard at this public hearing or wish to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Fear.
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Councilmember Fear, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Hearing none, that motion is carried. So the public hearing is closed at 7:05. I'll accept the motion, that the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Fear. Roll call vote to reconvene the regular meeting.
Mohler?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Okay, we now go into council actions pertaining to legislative items. I'll accept the motion. Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Pullman?
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each council member was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Pullman, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We now go to pending legislation. We go to agenda item number nine, second reading ordinance. of an ordinance involving reassigning some pay ranges.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the Codified Ordinances of the City's Classification and Compensation Plan as set forth in Emergency Ordinance Number EOR 2021-12-121, adopted December 8, 2022, to reassign the pay ranges for the Water Production Superintendent, Water Treatment Superintendent, and Assistant Water Production Superintendent, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
With councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Any discussion about this one prior to our roll call vote? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Moeller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
Thank you, we go to agenda item number 10, second reading of an ordinance involving a grant agreement with the Corps.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a grant agreement with a consortium for ongoing reinvestment efforts, Corps, in the amount of $600,000, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Nab?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion to councilmember Nab, second by councilmember Pullman. Questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Moeller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
Thank you, we go to agenda item number 11, second reading of emergency ordinance.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a development agreement and related actions related to certain real property located at 10 South Monument Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, Vision AWH LLC, City of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Fear?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion to councilmember Fear, second by councilmember Vaughn. Any discussion or comments about this emergency ordinance? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Moeller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
Before we go to number 12, Mr. Vaynerhorst, there anything that we can say about this at this point in time?
Number 12?
Yes, sir. Number 11.
11.
We'll take a look at it, I thought there might be something that could be said at this time, and if not, I understand. If it's not the right time, fine, if it's the right time.
You know, fortunately, I have good staff members I work with, like Mallory, since I'm on vacation this week, and she's filling me in on it. So, according to Mallory, we're allowed to announce that that's the Hilton Tapestry Hotel that's going at the Anthony Wayne Hotel, and again, this goes back to the CIC grant that we had spoken of, and this is just part of the development agreement with it. I think what you will see, we spoke to the bond attorneys a couple of times on this, you will see this property come back into the city's name from the developer because we're going to end up doing the tax increment financing district there, and that's just part of the rules, you're going to see a quick handshake back and forth, so know that that's
Thank you for that announcement. We now go to agenda item number 12, second reading of emergency ordinance involving a vacuum truck.
An emergency ordinance authorizing the lease purchase financing of a vacuum truck, execution of a master tax exempt lease purchase agreement and related agreements, certificates, and instruments, and declaring an emergency, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pullman?
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion to councilmember Pullman, seconded by Vice Mayor Ryan. Discussion or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Moeller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
Okay, we go to agenda item number 13, second reading of an ordinance involving Edwards Avenue Alley.
An ordinance vacating a portion of right of way Edwards Avenue Alley located between Coralie Street and the railroad situated in the first ward, south side, City of Hamilton, Ohio, City of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Vaughn?
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion to councilmember Vaughn, second by councilmember Nab. Any discussion on this one? Roll call vote, please.
Moeller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Orance adopted, 7-0.
Okay, we now go to new legislation, agenda item number 14, first reading of an ordinance involving 919 North Third Street.
An ordinance authorizing and ratifying the purchase of 919 North Third Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, Partnerships for Housing Incorporated, seller, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
Thank you, we go to agenda item number 15, first reading of an ordinance involving 814 North Second Street.
An ordinance authorizing and ratifying the purchase of 814 North Second Street, Hamilton, Butler County, Ohio 45011, James E. Hall, seller, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
Go to agenda item number 16, first reading of an ordinance involving 841, 845, 847, 859 North Second.
An ordinance authorizing and ratifying the purchase of 841, 845, 847, and 859 North Second Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, James M. Asher, seller, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
Thank you, we go to agenda item number 17, first reading of an ordinance involving 844, 838 North Second.
An ordinance authorizing and ratifying the purchase of 844 and 838 North Second Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, Bright Leaf Investments LLC, seller, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
Thank you, we go to agenda item number 18, first reading of an ordinance involving 852 North Second Street.
An ordinance authorizing and ratifying the purchase of 852 North Second Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, Frank S. Atkins, seller, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
Thank you, agenda item number 19 is a first reading of an ordinance involving 855 North Third Street.
An ordinance authorizing and ratifying the purchase of 855 North Third Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, Pentecostal Apocalyptic Church of Jesus Incorporated, seller, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
Thank you, agenda item number 20, first reading of an ordinance involving 859 North Third Street.
An ordinance authorizing and ratifying the purchase of 859 North Third Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, Ted Flynn and Phyllis Flynn, seller, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
Go to agenda item number 20, huh? Excuse me, first reading of an ordinance involving North, excuse me, 903 North Third Street.
An ordinance authorizing and ratifying the purchase of 903 North Third Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, Frederick W. Kemplin and Virginia L. Kemplin, seller, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
Okay, we go to agenda item number 22, first reading of an ordinance involving 822 North Second Street.
An ordinance authorizing and ratifying the purchase of 822 North Second Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, Alan Green, seller, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
Go to agenda item number 23, first reading of an ordinance involving 837 North Second Street.
An ordinance authorizing and ratifying the purchase of 837 North Second Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, Michael J. Tencher and Patty A. Tencher, seller, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
Agenda item number 24, first reading of an ordinance involving 840 North Second Street.
An ordinance authorizing and ratifying the purchase of 840 North Second Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, Cornelius Properties LLC, seller, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
Go to agenda item number 25, first reading of an ordinance involving 809 North Second Street.
An ordinance authorizing and ratifying the purchase of 809 North Second Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, 809 North Second Street LLC, and Patty Tencher, seller, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
Agenda item number 26, first reading of an ordinance involving 811 and 813 North Second Street.
An ordinance authorizing and ratifying the purchase of 811 and 813 North Second Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, Michael J. Tencher and Patty A. Tencher, seller, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
Go to agenda item number 27, first reading of an ordinance involving 815 and 817 North Second Street.
An ordinance authorizing and ratifying the purchase of 815 and 817 North Second Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, Michael J. Tencher and Patty A. Tencher, seller, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
We go to agenda item number 28, which is a first reading of an ordinance involving 818 North Second Street.
An ordinance authorizing and ratifying the purchase of 818 North Second Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, Michael J. Tencher and Patty A. Tencher, seller, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
Go to agenda item number 29, first reading of an ordinance involving 923 North Third Street.
An ordinance authorizing and ratifying the purchase of 923 North Third Street, Hamilton, Ohio 45011, LND Property Management LLC, seller, City of Hamilton purchaser, first reading.
Go to agenda item number 30, an ordinance involving Schedule A and the classification of Senior Registered Environmental Health Specialists.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the city's Classification and Compensation Plan as set forth in Emergency Ordinance Number EOR 2021-12-121, adopted December 8, 2021, by adding the new classification of the Senior Registered Environmental Health Specialist, first reading.
We go to agenda item number 31, first reading of emergency ordinance involving a grant involving the Community Improvement Corporation.
An emergency ordinance affirming the designation of the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio, as the city's agency for development in the city and authorizing a grant in the amount not to exceed $3 million to be made to the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio, for public purposes and declaring an emergency, first reading.
Here we go to agenda item number 32, first reading of an ordinance involving the zoning of properties of Prospect Hill neighborhood.
An ordinance amending the City of Hamilton zoning ordinance number 7503 by changing the zoning of specific properties in the Prospect Hill neighborhood to TN1 Traditional Neighborhood 1 District, TN2 Traditional Neighborhood 2 District, TN3 Traditional Neighborhood 3 District, and TN4 Traditional Neighborhood 4 District, properties situated in the first ward, north side, City of Hamilton, City of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
Thank you, we go to agenda item number 33, resolution involving a lease of some land bank property, side lot, 808 Reservoir.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property acquired through the land bank to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, 808 Reservoir Street.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Nab?
I move that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion to councilmember Nab, second by councilmember Pullman. Any discussion or comments about this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Moeller?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Lauer?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, 7-0.
Thank you, we now go to the audience of the city manager. Anything you want to say this evening? Okay, ordinance of the city council. Anything anybody wants to say?
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Ryan?
I just want to say thank you to our police department, our fire department, and our utility crews for the outstanding dedicated job by turning this all back on and helping everybody out with emergency situations during last Monday's storms. I really, really appreciate the hard work and the due diligence the entire crews showed, and this is coming from, you know, some of my neighbors, some of the folks, messages I got. I'm not, obviously not going to speak on behalf of council because I'm sure we all feel that way, but thank you for everything you guys did that day, top notch service. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor? We celebrated Juneteenth this weekend, and what a wonderful event. I thought it was great that we brought it up, that it was at Markham Park, and the fact that we had, that we had an opportunity to show some signs of inclusion and doing really well with some of those things, bringing some of our communities together that may not traditionally come to Markham Park.
Yeah, it was a great event. Canis did a really great job, there were a lot of smiles and hugs, and we were all, it was just a really nice event, and we all had fun there, and some of the sponsors were like YWCA, Wings on Brookwood, Art Space, First Financial Bank, 17 Strong, Chamber of Commerce, Deep Focus Photography, Strauss Gallery, Keybank, City of Hamilton, Rivers Edge, Ensemble Health Partners. So, a lot of folks put it together, and it was, it was nice. Thanks for bringing that up. Anybody else on council, anything you want to say?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Pullman?
One note, I want to say thank you for doing, for Adam, he enjoyed that so much, I heard about it a lot, and FaceTimed him while they were down in Orlando, and, you know, just, he was just all excited, so it was a good thing, and, you know, thanks for, there was just so many people that were here that make that organization, that Joe Nuxall Miracle League and Special Olympics and everything that do so much, so, I know my wife's going to be probably mad at me, and I appreciate your remarks about her putting up with me, that's good too, but, it's, no, thank you very much, and you got a young man that's going to have a smile on his face for a long time, so.
Well, you know, you take all the money out of sports, that is just pure happiness, and it does, that, when I saw that video, man, that gave me a chill.
And I, I don't want to advertise for anybody, but, you know, Jersey Mike's is like one of the biggest supporters of that, they, they close, they gave one day of their business nationwide, 25-plus million dollars to spec, to make that event happen, so it was pretty amazing, you know, that big companies like that stepped up too, so, big event. I got a lot of pictures, and I was amazed, so.
Anyone else on council?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Since we will not be together again until after the 4th, I think it's important that everyone knows that the July 4th parade is on. It is on July 4th this year, so it will start out at the fairgrounds and actually end across the river, so it will go over to F Street is where it's going to end, off of Park and F. So, encourage everyone to get out there, be a part of the parade or a part of the audience, and enjoy the celebration. Since the courthouse is under restoration, they're going to have the celebration that usually goes on there, over by the Fitton Center, so everyone, please join over there.
Let's see, is the route being published too? Because it, is it coming from the fairgrounds down?
Fairgrounds, High Street.
Or just down, right down High Street?
High Street. I don't know where it goes.
Oh, now Dayton, it cuts over on?
Dayton.
Like, cuts over on 7th or something like that? Okay, and then down High Street? Okay.
And then across the river.
Got it.
Where it usually ends, right?
And we're going to publish that route, crack somewhere that, we can post it. Okay, cool.
Pretty much same route as last year because it worked out so well, because you go down Dayton Lane, and people are celebrating going down Dayton Lane, and, and, thank you , sir, for bringing that up, there's a concert at Rivers Edge that night, the big drag ceremony will be at the Fitton Center starting around 11:30 or 12 o'clock. Looking for some more volunteers, you can't have too many volunteers, so it's going to be another special, special July 4th, you get a chance to see Dan Hancock in the parade. We're recognizing about 25 veterans and asked Dan to be in the parade again this year, he's a, he's such a proud veteran, and thank you, Dan, for being in the parade, for serving our country.
Also, the fireworks that night, Mayor, are going to be from Veterans Park, is that correct?
Veterans Park.
Yes.
10 o'clock. And we put on a great show, and I guess everybody be safe out there when they, when